Welcome everyone to the special meeting on Wednesday, August 14th, 2019, 3:30. Will you please join me in the pledge and then we'll jump right into the meeting? All right, we've just got a few things on the agenda that we need to, uh, we need to address. First one up is North Star, uh, right of entry. Uh, Mr. Hammond?
I'll let Mr. Kaufman talk about this.
Okay.
You want to start?
That's fine. Chairman, Commissioner, I'm not real sure even exactly what they're wanting to do. And I don't have time to read this before I talk about it. But what I do know, I remember seeing that this was on the agenda for today's meeting. And prior to the meeting, say, in the 1/20 range, I just spoke to Mr. Rogers, drove up 10th Street, turned on to Knowles Avenue. And there's two or three trucks with the board machine, with the board going straight down in the ground, like at 1:30 this afternoon, before our 3:30 meeting. In the same approximate location that it shows on this map that they want to do, that they want to get approval to do the board. So I really don't know exactly what's going on, but I do know that there's activity going on right now, prior to this being approved at the meeting.
Okay. All right, now, I'm kinda confused. Uh, you just told me that. We haven't even approved it, right?
That's correct.
And they already on the property drilling holes?
Yes, sir.
With Chairman, it's page 1, 2, and 3 in your book. They approached us last Monday or Tuesday.
Thursday.
And then they came in person on Thursday wanting me to sign this right of entry. And the first looked like, on this map, if you can see, this is a superimposed, but it appears that on the original draft, that they wanted four or maybe five test wells on county property. If you look on page 3, this was the proposed area. There's one on the, what I would call the southwest corner of the property. And then one about middle ways of the ditch toward the, uh, EOC building. And then one that looks like right in the dead center of the Humane Society Building. And then one, uh, directly behind the Hammont Building. That was their original proposal. Now then, Thursday, uh, they came back and decided that they just wanted to do the one, uh, on that southwest corner. But I told them, I'm sorry for the inconvenience, but I didn't have the authority to sign the deal. So, this is a contamination plume that, uh, has emanated from the old Allied Chemical Plant on, behind us over here, off of Chemical Drive, that was later General Chemical. Now, what supposedly contaminated, I don't know, because they made alum that they put in the water ditch forever, and they used on that, it's a, it settled the water, uh, from the freshwater canal. And, uh, so, it's bauxite and acid that's mixed together to, to, to change the pH of the water. But, but anyway, you can have them put in jail if you want to, we can sign it if you want to, or whatever you want to do. But, they, they don't have the authority to be drilling a test well on our property, but they're over there as we speak.
All right, I appreciate that. Now, I understand that they wanted to request for, for the right of entry. And, uh, at this point, now, I'm gonna be honest with you, if they have already started and we haven't given them permission, I say we need to notify them they need to be removed from county property. I mean, 'cause it's a proper, I mean, you do something, then I guess they want to ask for forgiveness later, but that ain't how we, we, we operate. Uh, so, um, I think they, they, they need to be told they need to, uh, to cease operation. Um, especially if we haven't approved anything. I mean, that's how I feel. I don't know how the other board members feel, but... Any other board members want to add anything?
Ms. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Mr. Hammond, or Mr. Kaufman, were you contacted about this? No request?
No, sir. I saw in the agenda, that it was on the agenda, when I saw the truck sitting there already working.
Yeah, I, when I saw it, I didn't know what this could be in reference to. Well, maybe we need to send the sheriff over there, or his deputy, and cease and stop this operation, dead in its tracks, till we get, till we go through the proper procedures. And if it's valid, then fine, but no. I just, uh, mm-mm. That's all, Ms. Chairman.
All right, Mr. Rogers. Uh, I seen on the map, looks like a several other test wells, all over the place. I know they some on the city warehouse yard, they everywhere else. Uh, but to come in and say, "We're gonna drill one here," and not even wait to get approval?
No. All right, Mr., uh, I mean, Mr. Novak, we need to make any kind of action here.
Mr. Chairman, the original intent was obviously to get your authority on the right of entry. If the commission wants to take, give the staff direction, we'll, we'll obviously do a cease and desist immediately. We'll go back in, in whatever your direction is going forward. If, if it's for public health and safety, and that you want to facilitate it, authorize us to continue to work with them, we'll, we'll get to that point and authorize you to sign a right of entry after we get back to step one today, and get them off the property for trespassing.
Okay.
But if you can take a formal action, giving us that guidance, then we'll move forward in that direction.
All right, I entertain a motion, and we'll move forward then.
So move, the motion, cease.
Motion by Commissioner McDaniel.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Rogers. Any further board discussion on this? Anyone in the public on this? Anyone in the public? All right? Any opposition to the motion? Motion passes 5-0.
All right, we'll, the attorney will do the cease and desist, and we'll get the sheriff's office or the police department to go run them off. Uh, I don't know that it's in our interest that we let them do test wells, but if that's what you want me to work out, they, they, they sent a letter, uh, dated August the 2nd. We got it, I guess, last Monday, in the office. Uh, some, one of their representatives showed up Thursday and wanted a meeting, and I was busy, and, uh, they wanted it signed immediately. And I told them that we wouldn't be signing it, but we may have a meeting this week. And because we were contemplating that, uh, they never got permission from us. So as far as I'm concerned, they go fly guy, if that's what you want me to tell them to do.
Okay.
Uh, I don't, we're under no obligation to let them do a test well under our property.
I got you.
And to my knowledge, I, I haven't heard the city give authorization, or the railroad, or the Duke Power. So, they've got all these proposed wells. This is a subcontractor of Chemtrade, who has been hired by, I'm assuming, I guess we shouldn't assume, but, but the company, which I believe is General Chemical now.
Okay. Have, have they been contracted with DEP? My point is, it says, they, they referenced DEP in this letter, and I just wanted to...
It says, "In cooperation."
Right.
It says that they have, uh, it says, "This letter is regarded to ongoing investigation and cleanup of environmental pickups," excuse me, impacts, reported by the above referenced facility. North Star Contracting Group, North Star, has been retained by Chemtrade Logistics, Chemtrade, in cooperation with the Florida Department of Environmental Protection, to complete an assessment to determine if there are any environmental impacts to groundwater in the site vicinity. So, no, they're not working for DEP. They, they just, they're working for this Chemtrade.
All right. Mr. Novak can move forward with what we need. All right. Moving on down to item B, award bid number 1819-37, Dead Lakes Campground Operations. Mr. Yeager?
Yes, Ms. Chairman, board members, thank you. Uh, as you know, we had went out for, uh, operation and further development of the, uh, Dead Lakes Campground after it was devastated from the hurricane. We actually tried to do a lot of that originally, uh, with our, with our staff, and, and quickly come to understand, we didn't have enough staff to get this thing put back online. Uh, we went out for bid, we received two bids. Actually, both of the bids were good bids, uh, but at this time, after, after reading these bids, after meeting, uh, Mr. Novak, myself, and the Parks Director, Billy Trailer, met with both, uh, of the responders, uh, we'd have to recommend that we go with GAC Contractors for the further development and operations of the Dead Lakes Campground.
Okay. All right. I entertain a motion that we accept the staff's recommendation to go with GAC Contractors, Inc., to run Dead Lakes Campground operation.
So move.
All right, motion by Commissioner McDaniel.
Second. And Mr. Chairman, if y'all don't mind including in that, uh, that, that they have expressed interest in forming a separate LLC from just GAC, to, to give the attorney and your staff the authority to put that in, in whatever, uh, form that, as far as the company is concerned with that. Uh, we'll, we'll, uh, if, if you'll include that in your motion, along with the chairman being able to sign the contract, once we've worked out all the details of that contract.
Good deal. So, that's good.
That's fine. Yes, sir. All right. Second, Stan, sir?
Yes.
Yes, second. All right, any further board discussion on this?
Yes.
Yes, go ahead and speak.
Uh, just so we'll have it on record, this campground, there's three components to it. We have a public boat ramp there, which is not part of the campground. Also, we have, uh, picnic areas, uh, for, we have a playground area, and none of that will be charged for. That, we need to let GAC, I don't know if they have a representative here or not, but understand, the boat ramp is not part of their contract. And these playgrounds, which they may be the groundskeepers, all of them, people are not to be charged, and they go up there and they have birthday parties, Easter egg hunts, you name it, weddings, or whatever, just for the camping. Okay?
That's correct.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yes, sir. All right, any more questions? All right, anyone in the public on this? Anyone in the public? All right. Any opposition to that motion? All right, motion passes 5-0. All right, thank you, Mr. Yeager. All right, C, moving on down, building code ordinance revision.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Uh, the first item under C, with regards to proposed amendments to your building code ordinance, which was 2001-03, is the most recent one the county works from. Um, in working with the building department, the planning department, and your administrative staff, uh, and in addressing the issues that they're currently having, uh, there's been a couple of recommendations that we'd like to introduce to you for your consideration on August 27th, at your regular meeting. Um, but obviously, we, we need your authorization to advertise and to schedule a public hearing. Um, so you'll read number 2, it says, "An ordinance of Gulf County, amending Gulf County ordinance 2001-13." And what we've done is, we've provided you basically a summary or an overview of the language that we'll, uh, request, um, in order to, I guess, add more teeth to the ordinance, to enable the county staff, uh, law enforcement, planning, building departments, to, uh, stop the violations. This is specifically with regards to finding and enforcement of violations that will include the county administration with immediate authorization. Um, as it currently stands on the statute, you have the ability for a second degree misdemeanor and up to 60 days in jail, and up to $500 per day, per violation. In addition to that, for public health and safety, what we're recommending for your consideration is that there be an ability, after a 24-hour notice, on, posted on-site for, uh, owners of property, for the disconnect of any power service on a non-compliant or non-permitted structure or habitation, um, on a parcel in Gulf County. Um, what we're running into, and what we've dealt with since the storm, obviously, there's, and each of you commissioners have received your complaints, or share of them, are folks that are illegally, uh, putting habitable structures, um, RVs, uh, you name it. I mean, there's a lot of different things, and I understand, we, we understand as a staff, that there's been a need, um, that all hands on deck, for people to have a place to live. And as we ideally come back online, day by day, the ordinance doesn't enable the ability to go out there and to remove that. So you have people illegally living on a parcel, and you have anywhere from five, 10, 15 RVs on one, that are served off, serviced from one power pole. Um, so this gives the county the ability to immediately shut that down, so it doesn't affect or harm the neighbors and their public safety, and then we can follow the ordinance in terms of the fine structures and the special master hearings. But that removes the immediate problem after we actually post notice on the property. If you have an RV in Gulf County, according to the LDRs and the comp plan, you can put an RV on a parcel, you can service it with power. But when you start adding four, five, six RVs, that's when you're violating the law, and it doesn't do anything for the public safety or the neighborhood, when you're, when you have to condone that for months on end. So this will give us the ability, and the ordinance clearly spelled out, that we can remove the immediate problem, and then obviously address the fines and the jail time, if there's one, two, or three violations in the future.
Okay.
Okay? Michael wants to add to it.
And, and again, this, the biggest problem is RVs, but, but that's not the only problem. This would allow us on any case, illegal construction. Uh, we've had lots of issues where people build too much on the lot, and, and, you know, stick their thumb up in the air, and stick their nose up, and, and we have to go through the process, uh, which takes three or four months. This would allow, with 24-hour notice, they either come into compliance, and we cut the power off. That's gonna solve about 99% of my problems.
Michael, if I could, Mr. Chairman. Michael, right now, our policy, basically, we have to give them 30 days' notice. I, I'm thinking, is that right?
That's, that's before the process starts.
Yes.
That's correct. That's right. And then 15 to correct, and then set the, the special master hearing. Uh, we've got one in St. Joseph's Whores right now, uh, where the, the order was done, went through the entire rigmarole, about a 90-day process, uh, to, to remove the, the illegal construction. And we're sitting here, 40-plus days later, it's not removed, and nothing's happened. I mean, just the process is too slow. Uh, most of these things can be solved, you cut the power off.
And I know we've also run into, uh, multiple RVs, we'll have them, they'll move them, a week later, they...
That's right.
They're pulling those RVs right back in.
And, and in your district, best example, Oak Grove. Uh, we got a complaint last week, somebody, they had put a sign for rent again. You know, it is illegal to rent in that residential neighborhood. They can, if they have their own, uh, that's fine, but this transit rental in that particular neighborhood is not within the LDRs. So the easiest thing to do, cut the power off. Solve the problem. But until then, you know, they're out of compliance, we cite them, they're back in compliance, two days later, they're out of compliance. I mean, so it's just a common thing, and they, they, some people have been playing that game, you know, for, for years. So this, this, again, y'all ask for teeth in some of these things. And, uh, and again, not only would they get the power cut off, but they would also be subject to fines, and then eventually, they would be subject to jail time.
Okay. Good. Thank you. All right, Mr. Novak?
So, if there's questions or comments from the, uh, commission, if not, then I just need a vote to authorize us to move forward with the public hearing, 9 o'clock, August 27th. Um, have the public have an opportunity to come and comment, and then we'll read it, and offer it for your adoption, and amend the ordinance from 2001.
Okay. All right. I entertain a motion that we...
So move, Mr. Chairman.
Move forward. Motion by Commissioner McCrone. Seconded by Commissioner Rogers. Any further board discussion on this? Anyone in the public on this? Anyone in the public? All right. Any opposition to that motion? Motion passes 5-0.
Ms. Chairman, thank you. Um, would you like me to move to D?
Yes, sir.
All right. Um, the second on that list there, you, the commission has discussed at previous public meetings, um, on how to combat and deal with the growth in, in your tourist quarter, and the solid waste issues that you've encountered. Um, again, after the storm, we've changed vendors, um, we've worked with the new scheduling, um, but you've continued to run into issues. And with your administration and the staff, they've come up with some proposed language. Again, this is not for today's consideration, it's just for us to advertise for a public hearing at the end of the month. Um, what they've come up with thus far is its mandatory trash requirements within Gulf County tourist quarter. You just adopted a flow control ordinance this summer, if you all recall. Um, and what we'll do is, we'll contain all of your solid waste laws in Gulf County, within that flow control ordinance. So instead of creating another ordinance, we're just going to amend your flow control ordinance, we'll advertise it for an amendment, and it'll contain essentially the following language, which is a mandatory trash requirement within the Gulf County tourist quarter. If you all recall, over the last seven or eight years, you've adopted a tourist quarter language. It's been consistent throughout past laws that you've adopted, and it will be the same geography. Um, it's mandatory trash subscription for all properties located within the tourist quarters of Gulf County. So if you're within a tourist quarter, you will have a trash receptacle, number one. Number two, all commercial properties rented for six months or less are required to have two pickups per week year-round. So if you rent your property within the tourist quarter, you're generating enough, uh, solid waste that you will need to have two pickups per week, which will cut down on the issues that you've all been encountering, ideally. And then the third provision, in a summary language, is all commercial properties within the tourist quarter with more than two bedrooms are required to have a minimum of two 96-gallon garbage receptacles. Those brown containers that you all have, which is required by your contract, that if you subscribe to that service, you will receive one container. What the language has proposed is, if you have a rental property and have more than two bedrooms and rent your home out, that the trash being generated in the tourist quarter at these rental homes requires more than one can. So the language right now proposes that if you have a rental property with more than two bedrooms, you will have two cans in front of your property that'll be picked up twice a week. And I'm not sure, off the top of my head, of the cost, I think, Michael, is it four?
I think it's eight dollars.
Eight dollars? So it's an additional eight dollars per month for those four additional pickups, um, in the quarter. Okay? And then, that language will be, uh, on the county website, it'll be available to the public, and we encourage everybody that wants to comment to come on August 27th at 9 o'clock, if you so authorize us to go ahead and advertise it for a public hearing.
All right.
You can have the debate then.
Okay. All right, Commissioners, any, uh, any questions for Mr. Novak? Hammond? All right.
This is a follow-up from your last meeting, that we requested staff met, and Commissioner McCrone met. Uh, the vast majority of your problem in the tourist corridor is not, in fact, people don't have garbage, is they don't have enough garbage. You have these huge, uh, parties in these big houses that come for a week, and they're generating more garbage than, than they have the receptacles to put them in. And, again, you have, some of these are five, six-bedroom homes, but even on the smaller homes, you have a, a, a family that comes down and cooks several times a week, that they're generating a lot of garbage. So, again, it's not that they don't have, uh, garbage, it's they don't have enough pickups, and they don't have enough, uh, receptacles. So, this will do, go a long way for solving the problem. We did some research, it's not the management companies that are having these problems, it is the, predominantly, the mom-and-pop renters and the VRBOs. And many of them are out of state, and, uh, and they're either not putting it out timely, or not telling their renters to, to put it out timely. And, again, a lot of them only have once-a-week pickup. You only get the Saturday pickup at the gate if you pay for it.
And some, some houses don't have service at all.
That's right.
And we have some houses that, and, and what they do is, they fill up the...
Other people's cans.
Other people's cans, and, and it causes tremendous problem. And so that everyone knows, this is only for the tourist corridor. This is...
That's correct.
So...
All right. All right, Commissioners, I entertain a motion that we move, move forward with that, advertising for that public hearing.
So move, Mr. Chairman.
All right, motion by Commissioner Rogers.
Second.
All right, seconded by Commissioner Rich. Any further board discussion on this? 27. All right, anyone in the public on this? Anyone in the public? All right, come on up.
I'd like to strongly support this.
Hold on, Dr. Hart, state your name for the record, please.
Pat Hardman, President, Coastal Community Association, 123 Marion Lane. One second. Whoa, okay, here we are. Um, it, it is a problem, and it's been a problem for a long time. Uh, you're, you're basic, you're absolutely right, they don't have enough trash cans, or the ones who don't have the rental agencies, save eight bucks or 10 bucks and don't have trash cans there. Uh, a lot of it is, is not that the visitors are trying to be bad, they just got nowhere to put the trash, except out in somebody else's can or what have you. The other violators are one who have their own weekend things, and they don't take the week's trash out, and they find a place to put it as they leave in town. So this would solve a lot of problems. It's a health issue, too. It's a bear issue, too, and it solves the problem within the tourist core. And I really appreciate y'all considering it and taking it in.
All right. Thank you now. Yes, sir. All right, anyone else in the public on this? Anyone else? Any opposition to that motion? All right, motion passes 5-0.
The, the other thing that I want to add, that I don't think we got stressed, is that there will be penalties involved with not having garbage or not following the rules. Part of the rules in the tourist corridor is that after the garbage is picked up, that you remove your can from the side of the road and take it back to your property. So, we will be issuing warnings after that, for certain time, and then we will be issuing citations through the code enforcement for folks that don't remove their trash cans from the side of the road, which looks horrible, and a lot of times, in the summertime, it's a, it's a health hazard. So that, in addition to that, we need to be strictly enforcing the, the rules in, in that area.
All right. Thanks, sir. All right, moving on down to item E, litigation. Mr. Novak?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, um, I've reported to you on some of the litigation we've been able to, uh, get out of the county's hoppers in the last two months. Um, ideally, we are looking to try to get this one resolved as well. If you recall, this was, goes back to when Chairman Quinn, um, some of you Commissioners, uh, set up a committee through the TDC. You worked for two years, you did a lot of project and planning, you had a subcommittee through the TDC for the 10th City, 10th Street Park expansion, um, in lieu of the Field of Dreams. You all reached a resolution with the city commissioners, and you voted 5-0 on this commission, and the city voted 5-0 to move forward with the funding from your TDC to help the city expand the footprint of the 10th Street Park, add some ballfields and some amenities, to help increase, um, uh, regional tournaments to come there and play at the city park. Um, after you had adopted that and authorized the funding and reserves, um, there was a lawsuit filed against the city and against the county. There was four counts. Um, the first count in the lawsuit was challenging the county's use, under statute 125, of TDC money, tourist tax money, on parks and recreation for this purpose. Um, it was saying that, obviously, that it was challenging the county's ability to use close to the $800,000 to help the city improve their parks. Um, and as you all have exercised this year several times over, you just purchased a golf course with the TDC tax for parks and recreation from your fifth penny. There's, you are lawful and permitted to use these tax funds for these parks and recreation when you, as the commissioners, which is under the statute, you're the body that authorizes and designates whether it's a, intended for the use of attracting tourism. Um, just like you did with the golf course, you had stated in your meetings that the, the intent was to expand the baseball field so that they could bring other families and teams in here, and have tournaments throughout the year. Uh, that was the first count. The second count was, uh, against the city, challenging whether, under Florida statute 163, they had the ability to develop the park, which it has been for over half a century. Um, and the third count as well was challenging the, the city's, uh, ability to develop, basically taking a formal action and having a development of that park. The park existed before this lawsuit, it existed before your TDC was ever formed 30 years ago, and so it's been there a long time. What it was, is it was adding features to it. Okay? Um, and so we filed, as a county, a motion to dismiss on all these counts. And the fourth count was a common law nuisance. Basically, the language in there is that it was gonna cause noise, um, there was gonna be strangers wandering in backyards, interfering with the loss of use and enjoyment of these homes along the park. Okay? So those were the counts brought against the county and the city. Um, what we're trying to do is successfully have these things dismissed. So we had filed a motion to dismiss on behalf of the county. Um, it is scheduled to go before Judge Gay. Um, ideally, if we can, don't have to take those steps, and we can have the case dismissed, we certainly will do that. Um, we could go into closed session. If there was anything that I would want to share with you that would be privileged, that would be transcribed, sealed, and would later be, become public record, um, to the public at a later date after the case was, was resolved. Without going into great detail, or, you know, obviously, offering any privileged communications, I would ask that you authorize the administrator to work with myself as we move towards these hearings, that if we can successfully have this case dismissed against the county, that we will do that. We filed the motion, and that is our goal, is to have this case thrown out. Um, we're pretty, we are adamant in our position that we are using TDC tax money for lawful purposes. Our position has never changed, it'll continue as you've just done. Our position has never changed, it'll continue as you've just done. But I'd ask for you to vote to authorize the administrator so we don't have to come back in the next week or two prior to your regular meeting, that if we have the ability to successfully dismiss this case, that you authorize him to do so. And I'll work with the other attorneys, both on behalf of the city and on behalf of the plaintiffs who live in the city, to dismiss this case in a timely manner.
Okay. All right. All right. Thanks, sir. All right, Commissioners, I have no issue with that. I entertain a motion that we allow the administrator, FC, to dismiss that case.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make the motion. The administrator and the attorney move forward.
All right, motion by Commissioner-
To dismiss.
McDaniel.
Second for discussion.
All right, second by Commissioner McCrone, you have the floor, sir.
Uh, Jerry Matt, a couple of questions, and stop me if I don't need to say anymore, but would like the stipulation and the agreement that we were fully in our rights on spending the TDC money on that park, if we could.
Yep. So that's been our, Commissioner, that's been our position all along, which is it's challenging the county's authority to spend the money under the statute. And like I said, you've all exercised your lawful right to do that on behalf of the taxpayers of Gulf County. When you collect this fifth penny, you earmarked it five years ago for Parks and Recreation to attract tourism to Gulf County, and you just renewed that sunset for another five years, so it's going to go to 2024. So, Commissioner, I agree with you, and that is the position we've taken all along. If there, if we can reach that, what we've always said is that the county will always, the county is always going to step in line with the statute and be lawful in its use of the funds. So if there is a dismissal, obviously, there's acknowledgement by all the parties at the county, and the city will move forward in a lawful manner. The city will develop their property in accordance with their LDRs and their comp plan, and Gulf County will continue to use TDC tax money in accordance with Florida statute 125. And I agree, Commissioner, that is the language that we will seek, and we'll have them acknowledge that. We will agree that we will continue to be lawful in our use of the funds, and that would be our position.
I just want to say this also, Commissioner Quinn is going to say thank you for, you know, trying to get this done. I mean, once again, the kids suffer because of these actions, because, I mean, what you were actually trying to do was rehab the park and bring it up to better standards. And the kids actually are suffering them once again, because that's where we're at, we're back to step one.
Right. Appreciate that. Yes, sir. All right, any more discussion? You want to add something?
You do not need to worry, that I will not settle for us paying one cent. We're not going to admit anything that we have done wrong. If we can't get that, I have no doubt that the circuit judge will remove us from the lawsuit, at least. The only thing there is against us is, just like the county attorney said, was about the use of the funds, which is ridiculous. Had we expended any major amount of funds fighting this lawsuit, I would not recommend us settling it. It is, it's really a moot point, whether the judge dismisses it or whether we agree to dismiss for no money and for no admission of any wrongdoing, as you would say, or that we could not spend those funds, then that's the only thing I'll be agreeing to. So going forward, don't worry about us paying a penny or anything like that. And if anything changed, I would come back to the board.
Okay. All right. Appreciate it. Any more board members anything? Anyone in the public on this? Anyone in the public? All right. Any opposition to the motion? Motion passed, it's five and oh. Thanks, sir. All right. Moving on down to item F, Ms. Cheryl Steinendorf, Housing Fair. And Ms. Cheryl, just state your name and who you represent for the record, please.
Cheryl Steinendorf, I'm with the North Port St. Joe Project Area Corporation.
Okay.
Marvin Davis, at Port St. Joe, also representing the county.
Okay.
Chester Davis, President of the North Port St. Joe Project Area Coalition.
Okay. All right, you got the floor.
All right, we're here today to tell you about the housing resource fair that we are organizing for Saturday, September 14th, at the Constitution Hall. And we are inviting any agency or business that has anything to do with housing, repair, building, realtors, lenders, all of those agencies have already been contacted to help sponsor the event, and we're hoping to have 200 people. We hope that the county will see fit for the ship program to be in attendance there. We'll have USDA and some other community action agencies there as well. And we just want to move forward and have the blessing of the county Commissioners.
We found out that they've had a success of these meetings in Franklin County, Jackson County, and those areas up there, so we want to follow suit in order that we can bring some of those vendors to this area in order to help us with the impact of Hurricane Michael. So by doing this right here, all the vendors come, people can get direct information from the vendors rather than hearsay. So we got a list of those, if you want to know who they are, we have a list of them. We can submit that to you or-
That's fine.
But anyway, we want to be able to open up, and we're going to sponsor this, the PAC, North Port St. Joe PAC. But we would love the county to be a part of this so that they can hear this information for themselves.
And I'd just like to say that we're also going to have the workforce, jobs that'll be present, and we'll have some social services agencies as well as the Health Department, someone representing the college, representing Head Start. And so FEMA, there's a few of them left around, and they said that they could help us put this on, and so we tried to get it going and started planning it before they headed out of town, which will be the end of September. So that's kind of why it's such a quick turnaround. We'd love to come before you to get your blessing and to your input on planning it, but we had to move forward. And so, anyway, so we're trying to do a very comprehensive approach. They had 800 people show up to the Marianna Housing Fair, and they had one in Bay County as well. And so our hope, again, is to get 200 families, and we're inviting Franklin County as well.
Okay. All right, so you said it's at the Cent- you're going to have it at Centennial Building?
Centennial Hall.
September 14th.
From nine to four o'clock.
September 14th, nine to four. All right, September 14th, right?
Yes.
Nine to four, okay. All right. So what we need to probably do is, and I don't know if Mr. Joe Paul, our ship people, hopefully they'll be available on that date, but Mr. Paul, will that date work for you? Are you already tied up?
No, sir, I am personally tied up, unless I'm directed by you to do it, I'll have a free Saturday to the end of October.
Okay. What about, what about you, Ms. Lynn? Tied up that day?
I have a lot of things going on with children that I can check my calendar.
All right, so let me see, so if we don't have a ship representative, who could we send in order to represent ship?
Yeah, because, you know, those ship grants are coming, the classes are beginning, the orientation classes are beginning in September.
Those classes will be done by the time y'all have the housing fair, yeah.
They'll be done by the 14th, but it'll still be in time for people to get the information about all the different programs that are going to be offered this year.
Right, right.
So it's really important as we reach out, because we were attending church the other day, and there was probably about 30 of us there, and someone asked how many people get the newspaper? And Pastor and I were the only two that raised our hands, so it's really complicated to try to get this information out to the masses, especially those who are shut in, elderly, not on the internet, don't get a newspaper, and can't help them through that process.
All right. Okay?
Also, if they cannot come, we would appreciate a pamphlet or a letter that might give some identification to ask where they, from the ship.
Okay. Whoever comes, we'll make sure they got some information at hand now. Yeah.
Any other questions?
You got any questions? All right. Appreciate y'all putting this, putting this on. Thank you.
My pleasure, thank you.
All right, Mr. Hammond, you have the floor, sir. Administrative reporting update.
Page five and six, this is the eastern side on the mill site. The first one is a Dewberry proposal, the second one is a change order, GAC. The net increase of the change order is $12,400. Total price, $1,775,693,67. Recommend both of these, paid for by the DOT grant.
All right, I entertain the motion. All right, motion by Commissioner McDaniel.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Rich. Any further board discussion on this? And you say this is coming out of the DOT grant?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right, any further board discussion? Anyone in the public on this? Anyone in the public? All right, any opposition to that motion? All right, motion passed, it's five and oh.
Clay had to be out of town this afternoon. They're going to start the industrial road imminently at some juncture when they replace that culvert. We're going to have to close that road, and we will notify the public as early as we can before that with the signage, but the, from Highway 71 on the north side of that to probably the transfer station in that range, that will be closed. It won't affect the Commerce Park or any of those things, they would still be able to come, but it would, it would close the section from Highway 71 down to about the power line. So just need permission from the board when that comes up to close that road, and we'll notify.
Okay. Yes, sir. What, what they got to replace?
We're going to go mill and replace the culvert. We talked about it yesterday, and they couldn't ever get exactly, we didn't have a map, no one could actually say which one of the culverts it is, but we did all agree that it was going to be north of railroad tracks. So we wouldn't figure that Southern Park. The other thing, the date, did you say the date, it's the 27th where we actually start milling, so you'll see, maybe some silk fencing and stuff going in between now and then, but the actual milling machine should be here on the 27th.
One other thing, could we get some signage up maybe a week before that? And so people that used to using that going to the beaches or wherever, well, no one knows.
Yeah, I think Robert Roberts-Hammond was handling the MOT for the project, but Jack did request a two-week notice on if they were going to close the road. Now, I don't know if that's doable or not, maybe a week, but as much time as we have, we can let you know that it's coming, and they'll have proper signage up, telling people you don't need to come down this way.
Thank you.
All right. All right, I entertain a motion. We'll move forward with it.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
All right, motion by Commissioner Rogers. Second by Commissioner McCrone. Any further board discussion on this? Anyone in the public on this? Anyone in the public with closing this road? Any opposition to that motion? Motion passed, it's five and oh.
And I don't need a motion today, but just a heads up, after two years of engineering, we're finally very close to advertising 386, which will be the largest Scott project the state has ever done. The entire 19-mile section of that road is going to be redone, but we also have some problem for that, and it's going to be much more complicated as far as we're going to attempt, we're going to attempt on the, what I call the Harmon Bridge, on the very south end of the ridge, to get a state temporary bridge put in. Otherwise, that road's going to have to be closed for probably a week, which will be an extreme inconvenience for the folks on the south end of that deal. It's probably a $300,000 to $400,000 cost if we had to do it, which would not be my recommendation. We just have to close the road. That's not our intent. But also, on the north end of that, and I can't remember the intersection, there's a huge culvert, I'm talking about a massive culvert under that road. Lee Goodwin, on the north end, that will have to be closed, and we're talking about more than a week on the north end. Now, again, that wouldn't affect the folks south of the bridge and whatnot, but it would still affect folks coming from 71 to 98. But that's a very big project, just keep that on the, in the back of your mind, we're going to have to close that road, certainly on the north end for at least a week, and we're going to do everything we can to get a temporary bridge if the state will loan us one at the Harmon Bridge. It is imperative that we fix that problem. It has been a problem all my life. It has got to be demugged, to be done right. The bridge is actually not going to be replaced. The bridge is actually in good shape, but it's the approaches, and it's very similar to what the city did at 16th Street, and, or the city and county did at 6th Street, and then 16th, and then 8th, most, more recently. Now, I will tell you, whatever we did at 16th Street has worked, because that's 10 or 11 years in, and it has not dipped anymore. But, and we'll see on 8th if they did as good a job on that, but that's going, it's going to be a massive inconvenience for folks for that to be closed. So we're going to attempt to do the temporary bridge, but not a guarantee. The last thing I have, we're looking at Stone Mill Creek Road to replace all the way to the prison. That's on the, we haven't, it looks like we're going to get it, we haven't been, haven't confirmed that the state's going to fund it. That's another one where we will have to do a temporary bridge at that bridge at the prison, and we may do a one-lane since the only one affected would be the prison, but that's something, looking forward, that we're going to have to have a temporary bridge there because there's no, no other alternative to bypass that creek. We need to have a, or I'm recommending we have a housing workshop next week with the board to talk about strategies and different things that we need to have, just, and I would wish we'd just do that only, the only thing we talk about that day would be housing and ship, if we could do that. If you could pick us a date and see if we can agree on a date to have that next week.
All right. It's good for you guys. It's good for you guys. Next week?
I'm good. Any day. Anytime.
We're going to do it in evening time.
Y'all are good all next week. Joe and Lynn are going to be out of town the week of the meeting, so if we can do it any, any, any day next week, we're-
Evening time?
Wednesday again? Not working by?
Uh, we'll meet.
Wednesday 21st?
About, about the same time, 3:30 it'll be, okay.
3:30. And I would say that we probably need about an hour, maybe a little bit longer, but we've got a lot of things we need input from the board on, input from the public on, about, you know, going forward, not only with ship, but with HHRP and some of these other programs that we need your direction to move forward.
We need a motion for that.
Or just tell us.
Oh, we're good with Wednesday. Wednesday 21st?
3:30.
3:30. 23rd.
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
3:30. All right, yes, sir. All right, board members, you got anything? Will we dismiss? Get out?
I have one thing, Mr. Chairman, just for the, just for the record. On with this, this garbage issue, you have bumps in the road. We had a lot of bumps five years ago with Waste Pro. But a lot of people, I get called, and I'm sure you do too, and I've got, I don't know how many on here that I kept. A lot of people go to the local dollar store, general store, hardware store, and buy a trash can. They won't pick it up, because a lot of their pickups, they use a arm that goes out for safety where they don't have body, and it just won't work on, it's, you've got to have one of their cans. So I just want to let you know, you've got to have one of their cans, but to work on the trucks that they use, those little plastic ones you buy, won't work. When it reaches and gets it, it's just going to crush it right there, so I just want to make that aware to the people. You've got to use their cans that they place. If you don't have one, call. If you can't, call me, we'll get you a can, we'll get you a can if you don't have one. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir. Mr. Rogers? Mr. McCrone? We'll take this opportunity, thank everyone for coming out to this special meeting. At this time, I entertain, hold up, hold up.
Mr. Chairman, I do have one request to speak, but it was not in reference to anything on the agenda.
On the special meeting? Okay, all right. All right. I entertain a motion, we adjourn.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.